We're gonna ask Pastor Brown, would you come forward please? Give us our prayer and be followed by Councilman Crone. By our pledge, if you all would stand please.
Most gracious heavenly father, Lord, we thank you for bringing us into this meeting to accomplish what you have set before us in such a city as West Memphis. Lord, we thank you for these council people. We thank you for our mayor and we thank you for all of the agenda. And we pray that thou would bless this agenda, that they would accomplish as you see fit for them to accomplish. We thank you for having a prosperous city. We thank you for blessing us continually and for unifying us for such a time as this. We thank you for going forward with the mission that this council has. And Lord, we pray these things, that we would be unified with one mind on this day, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let us face the flag please, remain standing. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. Thank you.
Sure. I'm good.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Ms. City Clerk, will you please call the row?
Mayor McLendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda Junior. Counselor Bruce. Counselor Cat.
Here.
Counselor Crone.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Holt. Counselor Hutchinson. Counselor Mohammed.
Present.
Counselor Monday.
Here.
Counselor Mary.
Here.
Counselor Willis.
We have nine out of ten present. I haven't heard from Dr. Hold on.
Eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, eight. I hear from Councilwoman Hutchinson, her son is getting married, so congratulations to him.
Congratulations.
And I haven't heard from Dr. Bruce yet, so we got eight out of ten presidents. Can I get a motion in second to add the animal shelter bids to this, to the bid opening?
So moved.
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? It's added. Now, you all see all three of the bids, which is Eugene Wood Civic Center bid, the West Memphis Utility bid, and the Animal Shelter bid.
Make a motion, refer these back to administration for disposition.
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Can I get a motion in second to approve the minutes?
Motion approved and submitted, second.
In discussion? All pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Can I get a motion in second to add the resolution from the Planning Department? That Chair Bowman went over. We got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, and it's added.
Do you have it?
Yeah.
I got it here.
Alright, you got it.
I wrote all of this down. I can read it.
Okay.
You can read by title only.
Ms. Bob?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that O1 be read by title only.
And the resolution?
And also the resolution be read by title only, that was just added.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, City Attorney?
I'm gonna go with the old business reading first, which is the second reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance number 759, which repealed the park of ordinance number 730 that pertains to sanitary sewer service only, and which repealed ordinance number 737, and established rates for residential, commercial, and industrial sewer service for the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
It's read for a second time and be back on the agenda in two weeks for a third and final reading.
I'm gonna read the resolution next. This will be a resolution, a resolution to approve the purchase agreements between the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and Ray Stidman, Frieda Stidman, Raven Johnson, Florces Inman, ID Flooring USA, Arkansas Land Commission, Angela Fletcher, Raymond Hall, Bobby Joe Scott, and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreements on behalf of the city of West Memphis.
Hearing that read, can I get a motion in second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion?
Only what I stated earlier, I'm gonna have to not vote for this one because everybody, the, it's not really making good clear understanding to me because some of the people are still owning the homes. We haven't gotten down to the bottom line as far as everyone not being out of the home, so I just can't.
Well, I definitely wanna make it clear for you, every one of the individuals are at the home except the first one who is Ray Stidman, and he is the one who made us an offer to buy his property, which would be the last trailer in the area. So everyone else is out because most of the property are vacant lots, as well as some of the people like Angela Fletcher's and individuals like that have already sold their home. This is totally close to property, but there's only one individual, the first one, who made us the offer to buy his property because he wanna leave. So I mean, I think I'll be sort of difficult for him to leave and then we buy his property once he leave. At some point, we would have to make a, negotiate with him to purchase his property, with him being there, and then get him the accurate time to be able to move out the home like we have done on the other individuals as well. Is there any other discussion? I got a motion in second, alright. Ms. City Clerk, will you call the row please?
Counselor Bruce. Counselor Cat.
Yes.
Counselor Crone.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Holt.
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson. Counselor Mohammed.
No.
Counselor Monday.
Yes.
Counselor Mary.
Yes.
Counselor Willis.
Yes.
We got seven to one. That motion passes, will you give the resolution a number please?
Resolution number 2304, 2304.
The resolution number is 2304, 2304. New business?
This is O1, an ordinance to approve a water purchase contract between the city of West Memphis and the city of Marion for the purpose of providing a secondary source for up to 1 million gallons of potable water per day for the use of future industrial prospect, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes.
I'd like to suspend the rules and place it on the second reading. Can I get a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Opposed?
Second reading of an ordinance to approve a water purchase contract between the city of West Memphis and the city of Marion for the purpose of providing a secondary source for up to 1 million gallons of potable water per day for the use of future industrial prospect, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes.
I'd like to further suspend the rules and place it on the third read, but I get a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? City Attorney?
This is third reading of an ordinance to approve a water purchase contract between the city of West Memphis and the city of Marion for the purpose of providing a secondary source for up to 1 million gallons of potable water per day for the use of future industrial prospect, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes.
Hearing the read for the third and final time, maggot a motion in second to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have one. We know the water prices in Marion are much higher than the prices in West Memphis. Is that right? I said, the water prices-
I don't know the answer to that question, but there is, there is a clause in the contract-
It's a big difference in the price of the water. The people pay water bill in Memphis and the people pay in West Memphis. It's a big difference.
Okay, but there's a clause in the contract that says that they are not allowed to charge more for the water than they pay West Memphis.
They pay for us? That's what I wanted to know.
Yep.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure that they weren't making money off of the water that we were selling them for an emergency.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yep.
I don't like people coming here and making money off of us and taking it away.
And also, I want to correct me if I'm wrong, Marion have only used this water only once in 20 years. So it's not, nothing that they're using.
Yeah, their, their pumps failed and, and, and they, they reserved their water for about a week.
Didn't we have a contract once before with Marion with water?
This is it?
This is it.
This is renewing that contract.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah. That contract expired in May of this year, and so this is renewing that contract.
I remember it very well. I had one month up there in business. I had one month that cost me $775 topless. And that was Marion. Golden, Golden Eagle. But it is legal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Thank you.
Were there any other questions?
That's it.
Alright, alright. We got the motion in second, all pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? Hit pass, will you give that ordinance a number please?
Ordinance number 2683, 2683.
Thank you.
The ordinance number is 2683, 2683. I had no permission request at this time. Committee report?
Police.
Police? We're staff police.
Staff police. Police commission met, met on October the 7th, 2024. We had a forum, and there were eight items discussed. Pursuit policy has been amended, and they will not chase misdemeanor suspects. Both communities are working together for the upcoming football game, which was last Friday, and it was successful. We have our bike patrol.
For who?
We know who.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
We know who.
Okay, okay. We, you saw the bikes out there the mayor brought up at our last meeting. These bikes would be used for special events, robberies, working with managers, our business managers to coordinate efforts for arrests. Grants, receiving reimbursement for officers that have already been hired and applying for new grants when available. Our radio system should be mounted in all cars within the next 30 days aligned for hand-free operation. Our dispatch center should be operational by November the 1st. And finally, cars will be making, cars will be making requests for 2025 budget for additional cars. End of report.
Alright, that concludes your reports, police.
Police.
Public Works?
We just briefly met, but we had already gave the report for the month, but we trying to get a price for these trash cans, 10 dumpsters.
We haven't never got together on that?
Yeah, we did, we got together on it.
Okay.
We got to bring it about you.
Okay, okay. Trace, I mean, I'm sorry, Counselor McCann, do you have an update on the budget?
Budget will meet next Thursday. One of the things, of course, we need to deal with that day is probably the renewal for the insurance.
Yeah.
We need to look at what our options are there. I think it's too late to bid, so the price that I think you've been offered is reasonable. So, and then we'll deal with the, your presentation either that day or a couple of days before.
I can, I can do the same day or, or before.
Next Thursday at noon.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, go back to the police report. There's been a rash of robberies and break-ins over on the northwest and the north or southwest side of the city, and I'm sure it's all through the city, but, but is there anything that we might be able to do?
Well, let me say, first off, first off, I ain't, I haven't heard that. I mean, I'm just wondering where they're coming from. I ain't hearing no, no bad, so I'm at a rash of robberies on this west end. I haven't heard that. I seen someone, if something happened, happen, but I ain't heard that.
Well, I've got a couple of people that have called, and they've called the police out. I talked to Assistant Chief James today, Presley, about it, and-
What, hold on, I got someone here. Major, have you, are you familiar with a rash of robbery, robberies throughout West Memphis?
No, sir, it's a difference between robberies and break-ins. I don't think we've been doing exactly like people going in to cars or whatever, but it's a big difference between robberies and break-ins. We had a few cars going in throughout the city, but that's it, boy, there been no robbery.
Thank you, Major. And the reason why I just wanna bring that clear because since you said, I know you responded to some of your constituents. I don't want people thinking that people being robbed all through here in West Memphis because that's not happening.
No, it's fine, I just wanted to, you know, and another thing about the sanitation, you know, we've got a lot of small businesses that use the blue cans instead of a dumpster, and it seems like we need to look at the service of those because sometimes they get picked up, sometimes they don't. And it's just a few businesses.
Sure.
Do you have a list of them?
I do not have a list, but I will get you a list.
I'm on public work, so I need the list.
I could purchase a second blue can if they wanted to.
Well, of course, I have found in one or another parts of the city where I do get phone calls from, it, there may be a new driver who's just missed that on the schedule or wasn't on the schedule and they just overlooked it, but anyhow, normally calling Mr. Montgomery, pretty much he's 24 hours, he's back out there taking care of it.
Well, he is, he is.
So please give him a call.
He does.
Yeah. But we are training some new drivers who very well could have overlooked that on their route, so.
These would be small businesses.
They are.
Yeah, okay.
Were there any other discussion? On their budget? Alright.
Airport.
Airport, but Public Works, what you through?
Yeah, I'll start.
Like I said, Mayor, everybody has a copy to hand out for the, for the fees for the 10-yard dumpsters, which will be added in 2025, so please look over those. An ordinance will be drafted and placed on the agenda in November.
And no fees only for businesses that are gonna be using the 10 yards.
10 yards.
So it's not for, it's rates going up for regular people, so I want everyone to understand it's not the same thing.
No, all the rates on the 2, 4, 6, and 8.
Right.
Stayed the same. There was one $6 adjustment, $6.33, I think, that got outlined somehow, so that adjustment was made. But other than that, it was just the new rates for the 10 yards.
Airport?
Airport met this morning. Unfortunately, I was not in attendance, but I've got the minutes from the meeting. Ms. Cook, who is their engineer, reported on the North Apron Rehab Project and stated that they should be finishing pouring the concrete the last week of October, which will, will complete that date of Phase 1 of project mid-November. It was discussed that it would be in the best interest of the airport to postpone Phase 2 until spring because the fall and winter season is not conducive to doing concrete work. She also reported that the jet fuel rehab project is complete, and she is preparing the closing documents for the final paperwork can be submitted to the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics. She also reported that the spa repair project is complete, and she is preparing the final paperwork for that as well. She is now submitting to the commission a proposal, a copy of the update of the capital improvement program to be submitted to the FFA. After making that proposed changes as discussed, she is going to submit it. And that concludes the report.
That concludes your?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Thank you. Parks?
We didn't know that.
Chamber?
She's meeting, I think, next Tuesday.
Okay. Chamber? Utility? Personnel?
Personnel did meet, they have finished. Mrs. Carr has emailed all the members the final draft for the new employee handbook. It's already been two or three changes, maybe that one too. But we're gonna get that worked through and have it on the agenda in November for the council to review.
Also, I want to ask a question. Who all on the insurance committee?
It's myself, Melanie.
City Attorney?
No, I don't know.
I have the list on my computer at the house. I don't have it with me.
Alright. Did I overlook any committees or commissions? I'm sorry, I don't know, I forgot the park, A and P, okay, park.
Mr. Bruce is not here.
He's not here.
Yeah, Mr. Bruce is not here. What about A and P? You, yeah, come on up, Raymond.
A and P haven't met. A and P haven't met yet.
I think they got a meeting coming up.
Yeah.
Evening, counsel. Did y'all get my report in your packet? Did you get a copy of it?
Yes, sir.
No?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, okay. On the first page, as you can see, I've I've been getting, spending a lot of my time getting out to businesses. I won't, I won't spend too much of my time going over there. You can read those at your leisure. Something that I will point out, I've been working on, is going back and forth with RDOT a little bit about the speed on Broadway. It's 35 throughout, but I see cars doing 40, and it's not very walkable. I've been talking to RDOT, RDOT about doing some studies, maybe doing some crosswalks, reducing the speed, and I provided them with the maps that you have a copy of that are in the back. I've talked with the district engineer, and he has said he would meet with me, but I understand he's very busy, so that's something that I'm working on, just to see if there's anything we can do. The maps that I have, that you have, point out the numerous fatalities and injuries that we've had in the past few years just on Broadway. Any questions about that? That's really everything on the first page. You can kinda read the rest as you like. On the second page, something I've been kinda working on, I don't know if you guys are familiar with, you probably are, the Harlem Theater. It was the African-American theater back during segregation. It was turned into the city food market. It's back for sale, and I've made contact with the owner. He's an entrepreneur out of Mississippi. He's now wanting to sell it. It's just something that has really just come up in the past week or so, but there's some information there. I got to walk it last week. It's actually in better shape than I thought. So there's some good history there that we have an interest in preserving. There's already a plaque there that kinda tells a little bit about that, but if it's for sale, we might have some options, do something cool for the downtown area. Last thing I really wanna point out is we had a meeting with Gary Clementson Associates. You guys provided us with some money to do a floor plans, is what the architecture firm provided us with, floor plans and a master plan. That's the new thing, the master plan, and that's what you can kinda see a copy of, which I can provide you with a bigger copy. It's a very rough draft of an idea of what a museum might look like in the old courthouse, right over there. If you remember, we've had the asbestos and the lead abated that was taken care of with Brownfield money. We partnered with ADQ for that. So they came back with this rough master plan. We met with Chad Bowman and a few other folks. I don't know. The price tag came back at a minimum of $5 million to just rehab the building just to get it up to livable standards. That's without outfitting it, that's without staffing it, or really fixing it up much. That's just getting it up to code, basically. But just providing you guys with a little bit of update on that. And then last thing is we've, we've started dealing out or doling out our grant money. That's some funds that we get from the state. Main Street businesses that are members of our program can apply for these funds. You can see the three that have applied and been approved. One has already gotten, they've already done their project. Deep South, down by the amphitheater, has gotten new awnings up. Our program is a matching program, so when they turn the receipt, the paid in full receipt into us, we will match them. I believe that was about $8,000, so we can match them four out of funds from Little Rock.
Also, just give them a quick update on the water towers.
Thank you, yes. Actually, I emailed with Barry Richardson from Viking Water Tower today. He said it should be done by Christmas. They're working their schedule. He's also gonna provide us with a quote about possibly doing a cool unveiling ceremony. He said the work should only take about a week. He said a couple of days to clean, a couple of days to paint, and a couple of days to do the logo. He said no more than two weeks. He said maybe as, as short as a week's period. And it's gonna work us up a quote for a cool unveiling ceremony. We'll, we'll see where that comes in, but that should be done, he said, by Christmas for sure. We've just been waiting on the humidity and temperature to come down.
Thank you.
Great report.
Were there any other reports? Committee reports, questions?
No, I don't have a report, but I have, I have a question. Seventh Street, Seventh Street Bridge, what ward is that in, Seventh Street Bridge?
Seventh Street, that's in Ward 3.
3? Ward 3? Well, anyway, the Seventh Street Bridge, it's not in Ward 3?
No, sir.
I don't, it's in Ward 4, 5.
Ward 5 along the south side.
Because 3 stops at Missouri Street.
4?
Yeah, but 3-
Yeah, it's, it's in Ward 4.
Just before you get to church.
Oh, okay.
I went and talked to RDOT. I could see the rebar in the bridge. You know, that mean the concrete fell away from the rebar, and it's bad. I went and talked to him, and they came and patched it, but the bridge is still rough. I mean, he tell a car going across that bridge. We need something done about that, seriously. This is the second time. I got a picture in my phone now from last year where they had to patch a hole where the rebar was out. If a motorcycle tire hit that, it would just tow it, tow it up and probably kill the person that's riding the motorcycle. That need to be fixed. Seventh Street Bridge, if you drive across it, you'll see what I'm talking about.
Isn't 191 in that part of their project?
That's, that's, it's, it's a state highway, yeah.
Yeah, it's part of one of their projects.
Wait, wait, let me, let me tell you all, I was, I was gonna get into that when I went into my presentations. Just yesterday, I went to Little Rock, and I was in Little Rock for most of the day, and I thought I took some heavy hitters with me to address all the issues that we could. Matter of fact, I had Ward Wembish, Bob Atkins, our utility general manager, Nick Coulter, Steve Jones, as well as Senator Ingram with me, and we had a long meeting with Ms. Laura Tudor and Mr. Jared, the chief engineer. And we got so many issues that's going on that state responsibility that I was only pretty much able to drill down on them on four of the issues. The first issue that we drilled down was the damn Rich Roll Bridge. I mean, I'm sick of it. Everyone know that Rich Roll Bridge is not the city of West Memphis responsibility, and I'm tired of every time you look on Facebook, the mayor or this, or this city council ain't done nothing about the Rich Roll Bridge. We have done everything, and we got an idea that we're gonna come back to the council that we can try to do something different, but it is the state responsibility. And one of the things, we talked to Ms. Laura Tudor, y'all excuse my French, I'm sorry, just out of frustration. But we talked to her, we had asked, why do we have so many stumbling blocks for the bridge that's small that takes almost three years to be repaired? We look and see that the state is getting ready to do this around Missouri Street soon. They're gonna start with Seventh Street and 191, come and start in December of this year. Why haven't that bridge been taken care of? Why do Summit has to send in a, to get a permit to move a gas line? That's their responsibility that's hanging off of our bridge. And we, as a council and mayor, have taken so much unfair heat from our own citizens about something that have absolutely nothing to do with us. And we asked the questions, I mean, I played the bad cop, 'cause I didn't really care if you were mad at me or not at this point. But they came up with some ways that they think that we can get this thing taken care of. I don't wanna say those ways right now, 'cause I don't want someone to misinterpret it and then get it to the public, the public start saying this, but just look within the week. Hopefully, I'll be coming back to this council, that's why I'm having another meeting. I'll let you all know about that in a minute. Second thing we talked about was the South Loop. I told them that if TDOT is doing the crumpus change, RDOT, TDOT, and the USDOT is building a third bridge, it's no way that you cannot do the South Loop, because it's hurting us for the economic development. But most importantly, on Broadway, you got high schools, you got parks, you got people trying to get to one side of the street to get to the hospitals or grocery store, and when you have an accident, God forbid, just say something crazy like a bridge crack, well, we know that would never happen. But when things like that happen, it constricts our whole city, and they have to do something about that. So she pretty much gave me a slow yes and a fast no, and came up with some alternative ways to commit to giving us almost twelve million dollars to finish, well, not to finish, to start on the South Loop. So I'm happy about that, that part of it. Second, the third thing we talked about was public transportation. I know I got cars, and I probably would never have to use a bus service, but I understand that there's individuals who need bus transportation. So we've been sending for the last twenty years, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year to Mala. Many of y'all seen the new vans that we had got built for Mala, Mala made for us, brought them over here. I stood out in front of them, looked like a fool, because I thought they were going to be transporting my people, just to find out that Mala is sixty-five million dollars in debt. So you know how that made me look, and you know how that made me feel when those representatives that I talk to daily called me and said, well, this cannot happen. So hopefully that Ms. Laura Tudor, with some of the ideas that we have, can get that federal funds. Keep in mind, it's federal funds, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, it's federal funds, not city funds, that they will probably redirect to our NPO that hopefully that we can use to run our, our bus service. If we can get that, that going, and let me see, what... All right, and also, I'll get to that in a minute. I'm kind of happy about that. But yes, hopefully get some public transportation for the people of West Memphis. And we know it's going to be a feat, because we know that everyone don't want to pay for anyone else to get back and forth when they have to buy gas, take out their cars as well. So we'll be at two-dollar fee. Once we can get our system up and going and get everything working, and you all approve that for us to happen, we can make that happen. And as well, if we have some land that's over there between Safflin and the, the Welcome Center that they want to give to the city, and we swam for some other mitigation funds, and she agreed that they will do that. All right, also, I just got some news straight off the press. West Memphis, we have two early bone sites in the city of West Memphis. It would be at the Seventh Street Church, the Seventh Street Church of Christ, and the First Baptist Church on Missouri. So I, I say, and I've been preaching all day today, I say, I don't, West Memphis is nonpartisan. I have Republican friends, I have Democratic friends. My goal is to make sure that people, period, have an opportunity to go out to the polls and vote. And that's my goal, whatever God, in the, in the, the Supreme Court heart. I don't know what it was, I don't know if it was my prayer or you all's prayer, but it happened, and I can't believe it, but we do have early bone in West Memphis. So I'm very excited about that. God, it seems like every time I turn around, the Lord just keep blessing me. Wow. Wow, that's amazing. Second of all, I want the public to know, I truly want to thank each one of the city council members that stand up here today. I came to them with a plan, and I asked them that we had, oh, a little over two-point-two million dollars for the streets that need to be overlaid. And you all decided that we would do this half this year and the other half the second year. And I'm happy to say that one-point-million dollars of overlay street has now been completed here in the city of West Memphis. So for those that, once again, saying where streets got potholes, now we got little things here and there that we got to fix. And Council McCrum, I did get that, I got there, we got all that taken care of. But definitely, our streets are much better, and I'm just happy that we was able to get that deal. And I want to thank each and one, each and every one of you all for voting and making that, making that happen for me. Wow.
Golly.
Man.
Makes you feel good, don't it?
Yeah, it, 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 it does, it does, it, it does. I just want everyone to be able to have opportunities to go out and vote, so that's, that's my thing. Also, Monday, October the twenty-first, is going to be our Face Fall Festival at the High Tower Park from five to seven, is that right, five, seven, thirty, somewhere in that way? We're just asking all our churches, congregants, citizens, everyone, just come out. Just fellowship, all our police departments, bar, utilities, we want you all to meet everyone at the park. So you can put a face with a name to be able to talk to everyone that you need, so definitely, that is good. Nick, don't send me too much, I may start dancing over here, I want to dance. But, wow. Well, once, once again, we got early bone here in West Memphis, thank you. All right, but that's all I had for presentations. I had no announcements. We go, go ahead.
Are you done, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to announce that Keith West Memphis Beautiful Cleanup Bliss will be Saturday, October twenty-sixth. I'm very, very thankful we've already had a lot of people calling to register. We've had a lot of teenagers that are going to be working to get credit hours that they need. So we, the city, the city crew is out cleaning up already, but please save a little dirt for us, so we can, so we can clean and give the teenagers a good experience all over the city, not just one area, because there's some parts of the city that's a little bit worse than others. And the main idea is to educate our citizens all over the city of West Memphis what we need, not just one part, but every part. We don't want to go on one end and see it all groomed and beautified. We want to go on every end and at least see people making an effort. And also, we were not going to get dumpsters. It was not in my plan, but I'm very thankful for Major Stacy Allen, and I think Tyrone McRight with the Quorum Court contacted me. Major Stacy contacted me and asked me about dumpsters. He said he was going to work on it, and today he called me, it's come through. So we're going to have dumpsters in the areas that we had them during the spring cleanup. So if you got a lot of fall stuff you want to get rid of, a lot of cleaning, just don't put paint in the dumpsters, don't put big tires in the dumpsters, and don't open the back door and go in the dumpsters and steal things out. Seriously, people do that, but it's okay. If it's, if it's trash, you can get it if you just close the dumpster back up. But we're looking for a really, really good, good turnout next Saturday. I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to it. Teenagers are excited. My granddaughter came to my work today and says she wanted to do something, so she needs some credit hours. I'm glad for her, because you know how these young folk can be.
Yes.
That is my announcement.
Thank you. And also, I got two announcements. Actually, I'll be working with Council McKenna on one. First of all, I'm just, I'm still trying to get myself together. You know, we were fighting for one early bone pole, and we end up getting two. That's, that's amazing. All right.
That's that double portion.
Yes, it is. It is that double portion. Also, I need to call a special council meeting for October the twenty-ninth. Is two o'clock good for everyone?
Make it work.
It's only one thing going to be on the agenda. You all know that. I've been talking to you all about something very big for the city of West Memphis, and it has finally came here. And I can't wait to make that announcement, and if we can meet this, boy, I promise you won't take no more than, than the prayer and the pledge, and, and do that, do that reading of that, that community development agreement. I'll be making that announcement right beside you all, and I'm so happy it's going to be major for the city of West Memphis. City Attorney, can I say, two-hundred-and-twenty-five job?
Oh, you can just say it. I imagine it'd be okay.
Okay.
You said it already, it's okay.
All right. Give me some Beaver Nuggets. Oh, let me stop. So we, once you all approve that, then we'll be able to make that very big announcement, which is definitely going to be big for our city.
I'd like to ask the city treasurer, could you tell me how much money I have left in my, in my fundraising account? Because I want to donate to families in transition, and I know I can't do it, but maybe when we come back on the twenty-ninth, if we have time, I want to donate.
Sure.
I know, I think I have over a thousand dollars, and I want to donate to, to that organization. We're not making any kind of formal, adding it on the agenda, because I need to be sure of what I have left.
Thank you. Council McKenna?
Yeah.
How many, I'm sorry, Council McCrum?
Please don't call me Council McKenna. On the, on the funds for the council, I wanted to donate seven.
Hold, hold, let me, hold, let me, you want me to add it?
Yes.
Because we got, hold, let me do Council McKenna. I don't want to call him Council McCrum, but Council McKenna.
Let's keep that straight.
Yeah, here's the first, and then once we approve that, then we'll come back to that.
Okay.
Yeah, like I say, we'll need to have a special council meeting next Thursday, October twenty-fourth, twelve o'clock. Make sure the press is fully aware that we'll be meeting. And then we'll have another special council meeting on the twenty-ninth.
All right, okay. All right. Now, Council McCrum?
Yes.
Do you want to make a motion, make a motion to second to add it to the agenda, right?
Yes.
You make the motion?
I'll make a motion today.
Take a second? Take a second?
I'll second it.
Out of everybody, I oppose. All right, just add it, now, what, what you want to do?
Seven-hundred-and-fifty for Delta Arts and the Balance for Families in Transition.
And the Balance, okay. For families in transition, okay. Were there any others that wanted to give any of their funds?
I do.
All right. Councilman Wheeler's?
I'd like to give mine to, the full amount to the Men's and Boys' and Girls' Club, Girls' Club, down in Fall, there's a...
That's Courtney, Courtney County, okay, your balance.
Yeah, because the last amount everybody received, I think, was like eight-hundred-and-nine dollars.
Okay.
Now, they may have the balance carried forward. I know Council Muhammad did, but the others, I'm not.
So I got a motion to second to add on Council McCrum, seven-hundred-and-fifty to Delta Arts and the Balance to Families in Transition. We have Courtney County Boys' and Girls' Club, by Councilman Wheeler's, the whole entire balance. And Ms. Muhammad, we'll come back to you at the next council meeting.
On the twenty-fourth.
On the twenty-fourth.
If you have it on the twenty-fourth, I can do it then. That's just a few days away.
Okay.
By then, I'll have my information.
All right. Wait, Councilman Murray, you all want to do anything? All right. Out of everybody, I oppose. It passes. So we got those two days, the two special council meetings, October the twenty-fourth.
Yes, sir.
At what time?
Noon.
At noon, and the other one is that October twenty-ninth at two P.M. I need all y'all there, at least seven. Only twenty-ninth at two. All right.
What's August twenty-ninth for?
October twenty-eighth.
October twenty-eighth, it's a special council meeting.
October, okay.
Yeah, real big announcement.
Well, we're having a special council meeting next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, let me move on then. Anyone else having an announcement, anything they want to do? Okay, we're going to go down to citizen requests, and how we do citizen requests? We allow everyone to come up and give five, not everyone, everyone who signed up, a five-minute, give five minutes to, to speak to the council, and give your name and your address first, and you will come. We're going to start in this order, Ms. Raquel Smith?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Raquel Smith. I live at eight-hundred South Tenth Street. Last year, on October seventeenth, today as a matter of fact, I called the paramedics because I was in a lot of pain, and I'm going through the same thing today. So please forgive me, I don't feel well. But on the way to the ambulance, they dropped me. And since they dropped me, I've been going through a lot. I've been taking a lot of tests just Tuesday, Monday and Tuesday. I've had to go to the doctor, back to back, back to back. I've been doing it all month long. I'm constantly at the doctor. Tuesday, they just took ten thousand of blood from me, and I'm supposed to be at home in the bed. But my life has been turned upside down because I experienced pain all day, every day, and this wasn't happening to me before. I have a virus in my eye that actually is a white spot that'll never leave, so it always look like it's cloudy. And then my eyes, my eyelids are turning outside in, and that's very painful. That's when I yarn. If I accidentally touch my face, it's doing it. I'm going to the doctor for that as well. Not only that, but my, my children and my grandchildren, they all live in Conway in Little Rock. And I can't even go and visit them like that because the people that I trust dropped me and it caused anxiety for me. So I don't get a chance to get that time with my children. Every day, I've made a big sacrifice to, to come out today to speak to you all. It hurt me because no one from the city of West Memphis called me to check on me and asked me how I was doing. I've lived here my whole life, fifty-two years, and I know a lot of your faces. I voted for a lot of you all, and no one called me. No one extended a helping hand or anything. So today, I'm asking you to compensate my, for me, for my bills that I'm still going through. I'm still going, I have two therapists that I see. I see them twice a month. I have to take medication for anxiety. I'm taking a lot of medication for nerves. I'm dealing with things I've never dealt with before. I can't sleep at night unless I take pills. That's not me. I'm fifty-two years old, and I'm too young to be going through all of this. So I'm asking you all to please hear me and please come back to me with a solution to compensate me for what it is I'm going through. This is hard for me. I don't have anybody to lean on. My mother is deceased, and she would be right here with me. So I stand here with me and just the Lord, the best lawyer there is in the world, the best doctor there is in the world. And I'm asking you to please, please provide compensation for me. Thank you. Oh, I do have a doctor's note, my neurologist, that states that all of these things started happening to me after the accident. And because of the accident, I'm going through all these things. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
You say compensate you, how far back are you talking about? When the paramedics dropped the gurney and you fell off of it?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So a lot of the issues that you're discussing or bringing to us today are things that occurred after that particular time.
Yes, ma'am.
So what you're saying is that you have documentation from your neurologist, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
To, to validate that what you're going through now is from that fall off of the gurney.
Yes, ma'am, and I'm still not through going through tests.
Now, the night you fell, the night, night or day, when you, you went to the emergency room, was that right?
Yes, ma'am.
For the fall or for something else that you were going through?
I was, I actually only experienced the same thing today. I have a pain in my lower right side, and they were coming to get me to take me. But when I got there, they didn't do anything to find out what was wrong with my side. They just heard that the paramedics dropped me, and then they started doing CAT scans and X-rays, but they never... and X-rays, but they never did clean the debris off of me. They never even, um, looked at my arms or anything. I had so much debris on me that I'm still taking antibiotics just to get it out of my system.
So they dropped you in the grass?
They dropped me in the dirt because they had just, thankfully, had cut the bushes down where I lived at. But I will say this, the male paramedic, I do appreciate him because I watched the young lady struggle to turn my feet around, and she just stopped. But the male paramedic, he held on to me, and if he wouldn't have held on to me the way he did, I wouldn't have been here today. And I know this to be true, but I'm still dealing with hematomas and, and blood clots and different things like that going on with me. I'm still going to the doctor. I'm still taking tests.
How long ago was that?
Which part?
When they, when the paramedics dropped you, how, was it weeks, months, years? How long ago was that?
It, it was just last year, October 17th, 2023.
So a year.
One year today.
City Attorney?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I, you know, Ms., uh, councilperson Mohammed, uh, provided me the information that you provided to her, Ms. Smith. And a lot of times, you know, I'm sorry for your situation, a lot of times legal advice is, uh, not popular, uh, but it's my job as city attorney to give the city the legal advice that is out there. And the city has what's called tort immunity. And what that means, I've got the statute here in front of me, and I've got a copy for each councilperson if they want it, but I'll read it. I'm going to read most of it, not, not all of it. It is declared to be the public policy of the state of Arkansas that all municipal corporations, which is what the city of West Memphis is, um, and other, or other governing bodies shall be immune from liability from suit for damages except to the, except to the extent that they be, are covered by liability insurance. Now, we don't have liability insurance for a particular case like this. The next paragraph says, "No tort action shall lie against any such political subdivision because of the acts of its agents or employees." So the city, by virtue of the legislature enacting a statute, is not liable for this particular situation by law, okay? Uh, that's my legal advice. You know, I think y'all have heard me say this before, uh, so you can do what you want to do. I've seen no monetary figure from Ms. Smith, not that it matters to me because I don't think we're liable, but I also don't want to talk about her medical records because that's private to her. But I had some questions about some of that too. So whether this had any cause.
If it were your loved one, would you let your loved one go without?
Ma'am, I'm, my job is to give advice to the city, legal advice, okay? It doesn't have anything to do with my loved ones. Uh, I'm sorry about your situation. We all have pain, unfortunately, when we get older. I certainly experience it too, not because of the same reasons that you have it, but, um, that's the law. And the city can do what they want to do, but my legal advice is that the city is not liable.
Ms. Smith, could you, could you provide for us a list of bills that you've incurred, uh, from this particular fall?
I believe that I gave some of them to you, uh, before. I was, I was saying, because I do know that the one bill from that night last year, October 17th, 2023, that, um, Baptist Crennan did all those tests, but nothing for the, what I was coming there for. But it was a bill for 15,700 and some dollars and some change.
I, I have not seen that, that you said.
No, ma'am.
Because whatever.
I saw no dollar figures whatsoever.
If you could just get us an itemized list, and I know we're under tort, but at least it'll give the council people an opportunity to look at what you may be paying or may have paid, or may need to pay.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah.
My name is Councilman Crum. I've, I've not heard of this incident, and I think it's, uh, it's only, if we're going to look at doing something, then I think it only is just if we hear the other side of the story. I don't, I don't even know what the other side of the story is. I mean, I hear what you're saying and, and, but I'm, there, there's got to be a little more too, something here.
When we got in the ambulance, the male paramedic, he called his, uh, he called chief, and he told him, he said, "We had an accident, we dropped a patient." Then the female, she called, and she said, "We dropped a patient, but there was dirt on the sidewalk." There was no dirt on the sidewalk. I took pictures of everything. I had people, everything, people who I didn't even see outside, they ran to assist them with me. I had, I had videos and everything of people just coming to my rescue. I mean, here it is, people that are trained to move people in rain, sleet, snow, ice, and one day, I mean, she just stopped turning my feet, and I began to fall over, and I'm thinking that she was still turning my feet, but instead, here it is, I'm ended up in the bushes with bugs and stuff in my ears, scars behind, my ears on my, on my body, boils, that I'm still taking medication for.
All right, thank you, uh, Ms. Smith. If you can, the council requests that you can get them the bills. They will, I guess, make decisions at that point.
Okay.
Thank you. Second, we have Ms. Renee Rainey. Can you come up, please?
Hi, good evening. Uh, thank you for giving me a few minutes to tell you about our upcoming fundraiser for Delta Arts. Oh, forgot, I'm supposed to give you my name and address, right? So sorry. Renee Rainey, I'm with Delta Arts, uh, 301 South Roads. So our upcoming fundraiser, this is our main event for the entire year, and it's called the Delta Arts Soiree. It's going to be November, Saturday, November 9th, from 6:00 to 9:00. And y'all don't have to write anything down. I have invitations for all of you at the end of the session, if that's okay. Um, but anyway, it's going to be a great event. We're going to celebrate, it's going to be a cocktail party. We're going to celebrate the arts, um, the educational programs that are available within all our schools, uh, also at our center. And the main thing is to celebrate the community as a whole. And we're going to have dinner, dancing, uh, local, uh, musical entertainment by Wiley Bigger, he's a local artist, and we're going to have artwork on display for, for your viewing pleasure. Um, this is also a great opportunity for you to connect with people from around, you know, the state, from other areas, and to come in and, you know, be with other supporters of the arts, and also see firsthand the impact that all of the programs have made to our city. So thank y'all very much. And is it okay if I pass these out when y'all are convened?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Ms. Rainey, you have truly been a burst of joy.
Oh, thank you.
Since you came, yeah, definitely.
Okay, and this is a little off. I would like to also thank Mrs. Mohammed for her donation and for Mr. Crum for his as well. Thank you.
All right, um, Ms. Jocelyn Perry, she's not here, I don't think, um, so next we'll go to Mr. Don Wilber.
Good evening, everyone. So, uh, a little backstory. Most of you know that I spent a lot of time overseas, uh, nearly 20 years living in South America. And, uh, some of the things I missed the most about this country was, of course, the food, and I would say second would be Christmas. I mean, it's just, when it's 90 degrees outside on Christmas dates, doesn't feel like Christmas. And, uh, I, one of the things I couldn't wait until I came back to West Memphis, one of the things I looked most forward to is, is not only the, the food and the music, I'm just a Christmas person, it's my favorite holiday. I listen to Christmas music all year round. I'm weird like that. But I couldn't wait to see West Memphis all decked out in Christmas lights. And then it wasn't. It was, it was depressing, actually, you know, to be honest with you. The city was dark for the past two years. And now, I was raised over on Clement Road, raised by my grandfather, and my grandfather was a stern man. He was not a nostalgic man. He was not a sentimental kind of a man. But as soon as Thanksgiving got done, he had me out there like Clark Griswold, his son, decorating a house for Christmas. One of the best houses on Clement Road because that was just what you do. And we kind of lost that. So I decided instead of complaining, let's do something about it, right? Um, so, uh, we have a, a Christmas decorating contest we're going to do, in association with the Evening Times, and, uh, being funded by A and P. Yeah, being funded by A and P. And what we're going to do is, it's called Wonder, uh, Wonder City Wonderland, Deck the Districts. Now, we didn't want to do a citywide contest like it used to be because we don't want the whole city competing against each other. So we've got five wards, and each individual ward, for the best decorated house, they will win a first place prize of $1,000. And that's not $1,000 from Venmo or $1,000 check. Uh, Jim wanted me to be sure and tell you guys, that's $1,000 cash in your hand, which people will spend on Christmas, right? Now, not only will there be a first place, right, because what's your chance of winning first place, right? So we got second place too, which is $500 in each ward, right? So first and second. Um, registration deadline, uh, you guys have a little sheet of paper. We will be making up flyers and posters, things like that. Um, registration deadline is December 2nd. They can pick up a form. Uh, we'll have one printable online. Uh, they can pick up a form here at City Hall, they have to turn it back in, uh, so that the judges will be able to go to each individual house. Judging will, uh, take place after the deadline, which is December 9th. Your house must be decorated by December 9th, okay? And the winners will be announced at the city council meeting, hopefully by Mayor McLendon, on December the 19th, again, just in time for a little extra Christmas money. Um, and that's basically it. Now, I was talking to so many people about this idea that Raymond Whiteside of Main Street, West Memphis said, "Well, maybe we can do something too. We can do our own contest." And I was like, "That's a great idea." So he's picking up the ball. Is he still here, Raymond? Okay, well, he can explain that another time.
For the business.
Yeah, but he'll be doing his, uh, his own contest. So I said, "Well, if they're doing it, who else can we get involved?" So we've also got the police and the fire departments, they're going to decorate their buildings, uh, on 7th Street. Now, the, I have it on good authority from some people at the fire department that they're planning to embarrass the police department. So, um.
Really?
I said, "We've only got one representative here from the police department." But yeah, they're going to have a little, uh, unfriendly competition when it comes to decorating this year. Um, running with that idea, we've also got a tentative commitment from the Chamber of Commerce to hold a contest for businesses on Broadway. And like I said, we've got Main Street from, uh, sorry, not Broadway, we've got Main Street from Broadway, we've got, uh, Chamber of Commerce from Missouri to do their own contest, and we've also got a tentative agreement with, uh, Parks and Recreation to do, in addition to, uh, uh, I'm sorry, what's the name of the park in Missouri?
Worthington.
Thank you. In addition to Worthington Park, they're also going to do Hightower Park, hopefully, right?
Yeah.
So we've got seven different entities this Christmas promising to light this city up. We are going to give Bob Atkins a heart attack over at utilities, okay? So that is the idea, guys. And what I want from all of you, I have your little reminders there, you have your little reminder sheet, start pushing this in each and every one of your wards because I want to see this city bright again.
Can you tell them about the pass it on part?
Tell them about what?
The pass it on part.
Pass it on?
Yeah.
What do you mean? I'm sorry.
So when you get your $1,000, you just pass it on.
Oh, yeah, just pass it on. There you go, right? Yes, sir. So, uh, yeah, please start pushing it in your wards, and, uh, yeah, if you do, you know, uh, we are keeping the judges secret specifically for that reason, right? No bribes, no nothing like that. But, uh, yeah, guys, let's light this city up for Christmas. I want to bring it back to the way it used to be, you know? So thank you for hearing me out.
Oh, oh, we got one question. One question. Is anybody going to be excluded?
You, you cannot enter, Mr. Crum.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
That's all I wanted to know.
Uh, we, we, we haven't, we haven't actually thought about it, whether the, uh, the council, city councilmen themselves would enter, but I would probably, uh, I would, I wouldn't want to be a Grinch, but I would say no.
No.
So, yeah, we would have you guys refrain from participating. Yeah. Now, your, your relatives are, are more than welcome to participate, things like that, okay? Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, it looks like that concludes our meeting. If anyone else has anything else they want to add?
I do one thing.
Go ahead.
Families in Transition has their soup Sunday, this Sunday, at Shake Shack in Marion from 11:00 to 2:00. Um, it's their fundraiser where they collect, the proceeds of this goes to buying miscellaneous stuff for that organization. So if you have an opportunity, buy you a ticket, and, uh, I will be working inside. If you want to see me working, you can just come on down. You work? Sometimes, yeah. But anyhow, um, that's this Saturday. I mean, it's Sunday on the 20th. Mayor, I got you a ticket, by the way.
Sure.
Okay.
Bring it to me now.
I got it.
All right. How come you don't get nobody else now?
I don't have enough.
All right, well, you give it to my show, we'll be there. Yeah, the council member had to add anything before we go? We got a great month coming this month. Uh, I'm glad that we're all in the same room, working together, so let's make it happen. Can I get a motion in a second to adjourn? All right, everybody, opposed?